All right, I think we're all set. If I could start the meeting with a vote of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of our Constitution, one nation, united in its soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Just to let the fellow board members know, Mr. Percy and Ms. Fisher would have been here tonight, but they now are on the town council meeting to be able to talk about our budget. So, just so everybody knows, we're going to have two additional people tonight. If I could start with the consent agenda, item 1.0, can I get a motion on the consent agenda? Mr. Kemp.
Move to consent agenda.
I have a motion, Mrs. Bush.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to have anything pulled from the consent agenda? Uh, Ms. Goldich.
Uh, 1.1C, please.
1.1C, okay. Anybody else having? Mrs. Zar.
1.1I, please.
1.1I. And, Mrs. Zar.
And 1.1O.
1.1O. Got I and O. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I have, uh, we'll vote on everything except for 1.1C, 1.1I, 1.1O. So, I'll pass that in the form of motion by all in favor, by a show of hands, please, for... Okay, that's unanimous. And, we will go over to item 1.1C, who's got the question.
I was in attendance, but my name is not listed on the first page. Also on page five. When you were at Northeast School talking about the superintendent evaluation process, at the bottom of page five, there was an explanation, the evaluation process for the superintendent of schools will consist of three parts. Each board member will complete a rating and so forth. I was at that meeting and I don't remember that at all. Did you actually have that discussion that the board members will be doing a rating on the delicious standards and each board member will complete a rating of each one of the goals?
That was what I had indicated when I described, I'm sorry, you and Chair. Um, that's when I had described the process that the evaluation team was proposing, so that's what you were voting on. And I did say that.
All I remember is asking for a copy of your notes, which you were saying.
Ms. Zar.
I want to ask a question about this same place in that agenda. Did we include at some point the quantitative evaluation, like the graduation rate and the DPI that we talked about, as part of your evaluation?
Not at this point.
Is...
That's all part of the, we talked about it being part of the district improvement plan.
But we also made those numbers, we discussed at two or three different meetings, particular percentages that we were going to include as part of the evaluation.
That was not in the goals the board set for me at the end of last year and not the ones I set for myself.
Not my understanding. Can you clarify that for me? We spent a great deal of time talking about increasing the graduation rate, improving scores by a certain percentage.
That's, that's part of the district improvement plan. That's all part of it.
I'm remembering that we spoke about adding quantitative evaluation to the superintendents, which was all qualitative, and we added quantitative. I know it was graduation rate.
I don't believe we discussed that at that meeting. And, I believe, you know, that would be evaluation maybe, um, as far as the fine points. And, Ms. Fisher is not here, I don't know if Mr. Kemp has any insight as to what was discussed, but we also have the evaluation, or the criteria that we set as part of the agreement with Dr. Conway.
Well, if I'm reading from the superintendent performance evaluation, and it says, ensure that our DPI increases by a minimum of 1.05 points, ensure that our four-year graduation rate increases to 82.2 percent, and that our graduation rate for class of 2013 increases from the graduation rate of 2012, and ensure that school attendance increases to 95 percent for the 2012-13 school year, for those schools below that goal. I'm reading from the superintendent performance evaluation form that we got.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not sure which document that you're referring to.
Okay, well, maybe the minutes don't reflect it, but the discussion should take place when we discuss, um, later on, the performance. This isn't my document, this is the district's.
This is the one that I sent you.
Yes, this is the, pardon me, this is the, um, your evaluation from the, um, what is it, August 2012. And in each section, there are leadership goals for the 12-13 school year, educational leadership goals, and that is where the metrics appear, um, for educational leadership, organizational management goals, and community and board relations. There are specific metrics in each one of the sections, 12-13.
Right, and in my self-evaluation, I would be addressing all of those.
And that was not part of the discussion, though, on the, uh, on the meeting minutes that we're talking about right now. That was not part of the discussion at the... It was, this was more about the, uh, the evaluation process, our, you know, the involvement of the 360 process. So, uh, the name missing from the attendance list would be the, um, one edit that we'd be looking for, for that agenda, or for that minutes, correct, Ms. Goldich? And there is no other edits? So with that edit, would you have a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Kemp? I have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of item 1.1C edited? That's unanimous. Okay, Ms. Zar, you have items 1.1I and 1.1O, so why don't we take 1.1I first?
I is the donation from Rockville Baptist Church to Center Road School. I know that it's been done in the past. Do you know that $5,000 has been designated for?
I do not know how the school has spent the money.
Mr. Hugh, I can address that.
He can come to the microphone, please, Mr. Kemp. Oh, there you go. Thank you.
So, I'm Mike DeBusschere, Assistant Principal over at Center Road. In the past, we've used that money to, um, help boost our classroom libraries. A couple of years ago, we bought listening centers for all the first grade classes. This year, we're looking to kind of expand our PBIS incentive program, so we're gonna use part of the money for that. And, every year, we always kind of extend it to the teachers and brainstorm ideas of how we want to spend the money. We haven't done it yet because it hasn't been approved, but, um, it always goes back to the students, you know, to just improve instruction for the teachers. Either we focus on a grade level or the entire school.
Thanks, Chair.
Sure.
Does that cover the questions on 1.1I? If so, can we take a motion to approve 1.1I? Is that, um...
So...
Okay, do I have a second on that? Ms. Goldich is the second, so, uh, I'm gonna ask for a vote, by a show of hands, all in favor of 1.1I. And that's unanimous. And you have a quote for 1.1O.
That's, um, staff development, and it, the policy addresses 18 hours annually. I'm wondering if, um, there's an accounting kept of all PD hours, whether the board provides them or not? And if it's per teacher, is there an ongoing record of PD hours, whether it's beyond the 18 hours or not?
There used to be, when we had CEUs, teachers would actually, even though it truly is their responsibility, um, many systems, including ours, the teacher, if they went out to a workshop and received CEUs from somewhere else, they would turn them in and they would get logged onto the computer. That is no longer the case. We're no longer required to track even the hours that each individual has, a teacher receives, except the fact that they were in attendance and that we offered the number of hours that were required to offer, at least 18. So the accountability for that is, is no longer existing.
So not even for the 18 that we offered, in mind what they do on their own?
Correct.
Do you, do you think that that's, um, a deficit in our record keeping? I know it's not required, but is that, would that be helpful at all, or does it not matter?
I don't think it matters. Our teachers are extremely responsible, they would, uh, they want to learn all the time, so, you know, they're here, they're working together, they're learning. I think that is an extra piece of record keeping.
Thank you, Ms. Zar.
Move to approve consent and consent agenda, item 1.1O.
And Ms. Bush?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask by a show of hands, all in favor. And that's unanimous also. That covers our consent agenda for this. Move on to item 2.0, which is the secretaries report, item 2.1, which is the opportunity for the board to add or delete agenda items. So we have, uh, items, Ms. Zar.
I'd like to move to delete agenda item 5.8, please, due to the fact that we have some extremely important agenda item and we're missing two board members.
Okay, that is item 5.8, school security update to be deleted. Do I have a second on that motion? Mr. Kemp? I have a motion and a second to delete the agenda item. Is there discussion? Mr. Kemp?
Well, I think, uh, an important presenter of the security piece would be Mr. Percol. And, uh, that's why I support waiting until he's available. Now, if he should return, uh, what's the expectation of their stay over at the chambers?
We're hoping we can get out of here and get over there before they finish their business. And, uh, I did make arrangements to make sure this agenda item is on the next agenda item, or, uh, next agenda, next meeting, sorry.
The motion was to...
Delete from tonight.
Well, shouldn't it be postponed to the...
We don't need to postpone, we can just delete it, it will be an agenda item on the next meeting, I've already made those arrangements. Any other discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all in favor of deleting item 5.8. And that's unanimous, thank you. And is there any other items to be added or deleted? Mr. Bhutar.
Mr. Chairman, I have to speak.
Could you pull your mic closer, please?
Mic.
I have to speak, I'm a private citizen.
Uh, we're on the adding or deleting agenda items, item 2.1 currently?
2.1?
Yeah.
2.1, yes.
Are you adding or deleting an agenda item?
Yes, I am.
Okay, what, would you like to add or delete? What would you like to add or delete?
Discussion about whatever transpired at the town council, town meeting on the May 7th regarding budget, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so you want to add a discussion on what occurred at the town meeting on May 7th? So there's a motion to add the discussion on what occurred at the town council, or town meeting on May 7th. Do I have a second on that motion? Ms. Zar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to hold a discussion on what was discussed at the town meeting on May 7th. Um, discussion, Ms. Zar.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, can I, um, could we ask Mr. Bhutar, um, for a little more detail?
Can we have some specifics as to what you wish to discuss about that town meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I view, I view this very seriously, so may I go to the table and have a speak as a private citizen?
No, you're, you can speak right where you're at, and this is, this is only speaking to why you want to add the motion at this point, we're not, we're not taking up the discussion, this is just to speak to why you want to add that as a agenda item.
All right. It was very distressing to be at the meeting that we are trying in the 21st century and saw the 21st century issues regarding the schools with 17th century approaches. And, basically what I'm saying, no matter what else we do, how much we do, education remains the foundation of its communities, present and future.
Okay, so are there specific points at the, from the meeting that you want to address in this body, that you want this body to address tonight?
Yes.
And what is, because we're, we're trying to add the agenda item, not talk about...
Population of the town of Vernon is 29 to 30,000. Register voters, 16,000 plus. And here is the distressing part. How many town residents spoke at that town meeting? Twenty. And, out of those 20, I think there were quite a few who spoke more than once. What is the message? That the 16th or 17th century solution to our problems is not working. And what is needed is a 21st century approach. We as men, we need to...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna fabricate a, I think the discussion that you wish to have is about the approach to learning that they've talked about at the town meeting? I'm trying to get to the point of what is the agenda item that we are adding this evening? Otherwise, I'm gonna have to rule the discussion out of order.
We're talking about budget?
We're, we're talking about the agenda item that you wish to add to the discussion of the board this evening.
Basically, what I'm addressing is the solution to our present problem with 16th century solutions. And that's where I'm coming from.
I don't think we're getting to the point, Ms. Zar wanted to know what the point of the discussion that the board will have this evening is, and I, I don't think we're getting a sense of that. It sounds like a philosophical discussion is what you're looking for, or that you're, you're introducing. Other, other question? Ms. Zar.
I'm gonna withdraw my second because I believe that Mr. Bhutar's concerns can be addressed during the budget discussion that we're going to have in, in the future. That's, that's what I'm hearing from him, is budget. Then, maybe that could be dealt with at our budget discussion after we set the date.
So you've withdrawn your second, and currently that motion to add an agenda item is unseconded? Is there anybody else who wishes to second that agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on, we will not be adding an agenda item for that discussion. Is there anybody else who wished to add or delete an agenda item this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 2.2, which is the Rockville High School's student representative report. Would you hear me clear?
Good evening. So there's been a lot happening at school, and we, we asked, as I'm sure you're aware, came and, you know, interviewed our students, and I had someone shadow people in my class, and I know that we all tried our best to give a positive example of what our school's like, and all the positive things that we do. AP testing is still happening, the AP English test was on Friday, AP Calc exam was on Thursday, and we have AP US History on Wednesday, so I think that after that, it pretty much wraps up, and which is really exciting for the people in AP classes. Also, the junior and senior proms, um, junior prom was on Friday, and senior prom is this Friday. And what's really something cool that we do at school is the day before each prom, the SNAP, which is one of our clubs, um, holds like, has a crashed car outside, and the day before, students come in from that club with a shirt on and like a fake injury to raise awareness about, um, drug driving and accidents to prevent kids from doing this stuff, that sort of stuff at prom. Also, the course pops concert is coming up on Wednesday, and that's their final concert of the year, and they've been working really hard, and it's gonna be really good, they're doing Disney music, which I'm personally excited about. Also, the NHS induction is, or has happened, and it was one of the largest groups that we've had so far, it was like, around 40 kids, and also, excuse my pronunciations, but the World Languages Department held their annual honors society inductions this evening. Three students were inducted into the Sierano de Bergerac chapter of the National French Honor Society, three students were inducted into the Christian Geller chapter of the German Honor Society, and the Diego Velazquez chapter of the National Spanish Honor Society, inducting six members this evening, which is really a lot of kids, and it's really positive example of the foreign language department as well. Also, we have our poetry readings coming up, where students share their poetry in the library, and it's free signups, and students, it's a really good opportunity to show they've been working on. And also, in the creative writing department, the literary arts magazine is going to be printed soon, which is where, um, Mrs. Norland and a couple other teachers, they edit and they choose a bunch of work from the creative writing students this year, and they put together a magazine with a bunch of kids who do like graphic design, and they're gonna have it printed, it's for center at school, so you can see what kids have been doing all year. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, does any of the board members have any questions? Ms. Bush.
What time is the pops concert? I believe it's at seven, but it's on Monday. Monday? Our rehearsal's on Wednesday. Gotcha. Okay. It's on Monday.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, well, thank you. Item 3.0 is community forum. Community forum is the opportunity for comments on the agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information to be provided to the board from citizens or community organizations. Does anybody wish to address the board this evening? Please state your, uh, come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Tanya Damon Merrill, 138 Grove Street. I'm sure that you have all read the comments that were given for the budget referendum on May 7th, and it was pretty discouraging to me to hear people not knowing that what was happening in our town, so, I know that you outreach to PTOs as the board to market our budget, um, and I don't know if you marketed it to other community groups, like the senior center, or Rotary Clubs, or Lions Clubs, or the Chamber of Commerce. And I understand that you are all volunteers and that you generally have jobs outside of this, and I appreciate your service, but I think that our communication needs to be beefed up. I think that we, going to PTOs is fabulous, and I do agree that parents should come out and vote, whether it's for or against the budget, whatever their choice is, but I think we're missing a large group of people in this town that should be considered. I mean, our budget is a part of our entire town, it's not just for parents. And, uh, I think one of the problems Vernon is having is the value of education is not felt across the spectrums, and it's really discouraging as a young family in Vernon to read comments from people who said they had no idea that it was budget time. So, I get your volunteers, and you don't get paid a cent, and it's a thankless job, and I appreciate all the work that you do, I really truly do, but I'm asking you to step up your communication game, and I know that they're gonna set a date, and I don't know when that is, and I don't know if we can do it for this budget season, I get it, but I'm asking you, in the future, to do marketing more than just PTOs. And secondly, I know this is probably a pipe dream, but when you do have your budget deliberation meeting, I'm going to ask you to reconsider your full day kindergarten acts, and hoping that we get grant dollars, because for me, we had grant dollars that paid for full day kindergarten, and when those dollars dried up, full day kindergarten went away. We have to find a way, and I get it's painful, to put full day kindergarten in our actual budget, not paid for through a grant. Let's pay for technology through a grant, if that's what we're gonna do, let's do something that we don't necessarily upgrade every year. But I'm asking you to reconsider putting full day kindergarten back into our actual town budget. I don't want to bank on a grant. As a, as a taxpayer, as a parent, I don't want to bank on a grant. And many people who filled out the survey regarding school choice said they wanted full day kindergarten, so I'm wondering how many parents would come back to Vernon schools from magnet schools if full day kindergarten was an option, and how much money we might save there. So I'm asking you to consider it, put your banking caps on, I know that you're in a really tight seat, I get it, I do, I've been coming to the meetings, I've been sitting in the audience, I feel your pain, but with common core, our kindergartners are going to be batting zero if we do not get full day kindergarten, and that's, that's a reality, it's not a farce, it's a reality, our kindergartners are already gonna be behind, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Julie Narse, 1401. I just wanted to give you guys some positive feedback, well, actually, really, to the middle school. I had the opportunity this past Thursday to go to the, um, middle school orientation, I think it was called, and my experience was fabulous. We have been conflicted about what we're gonna do for middle school, and I have to say, um, the presentation for Mr. Kemp was great, the teachers, um, I thought, were so positive and so engaged, it was great, they really pulled Justin in and got him excited about some things that are going on there. We had an opportunity to hear about different things he could join in, and things that I never would have thought he would have been interested in, he walked out of there saying, "I'm joining book club, I'm doing this, I'm doing that." So, um, I just wanna, I mean, it kind of, I've been saying over and over, we need to advertise and get it out there and all that positive stuff out there, um, so I just can't, I can't stress that enough, um, and I just definitely, kudos to VCMAS for doing a great job with their orientation, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Ms. Sanders, Sixth Pleasant View Drive. I'd like to start by saying that recently, it comes to my attention that my daughter, who is a freshman at Rockville High, and has, has earned an honor role, the honor role, would not pass if she did not complete 10 hours of community service. I would like to state emphatically that she will not be doing community service. She will not be doing so for the following reasons. One, certain community service should be done on a voluntary act. Forcing someone to do it is no more than forced labor. The alternative to volunteering for community service is to be sentenced to perform by a judge to a convicted criminal. Seeing as my daughter is not a criminal, nor has been convicted of any crime, I see no reason for her to be forced to do community service. Three, forcing her and all the other students in her situation to do community service is sending the wrong message. Any student aware of current events, and I would suspect the majority of them are aware, know that many popular icons of today have been sentenced to community service. The likes of Nicole Richie, Paris Hilton, Russell Brand, Chris Brown, Lindsay Lohan, and Naon Campbell, just to name a few, have been sentenced to perform community service. How are they gonna, how are they not going to draw the comparisons to these people and feel that they too are not being sentenced? As of right now, my eldest son, who is a junior at Rockville High, has told me that he already feels he is in prison. When I asked him today about the time he had mentioned that to me, and if he still feels that way, he responded, "Yeah, everyone says that." While I'm sure not everyone, the everyone that he's referring to are those, are those friends that are close to him, and not necessarily the whole school, one must wonder how much this decision to force students to perform community service will go on to reinforce this thought in their minds. As a side note, it would be interesting to know just how many students felt that way by taking a survey. Whoa, went too fast. Number four, I believe you are all overstepping your bounds and entering it into what is solely belongs to the parent's role. belongs to the parent's role. It is my role as a parent to install good moral character, responsibility to their community and not yours. While your intentions may be for the right reason, and I believe it is, it still does not justify your overreach of authority. While I'm sure we can find a lot of areas of agreement, I'm also sure that we'll find many more areas where we disagree on how a child should be raised. Such as a creator God who will they stand before and give an account to one day, abstinence over being safe while having sex, and moral absolutes. None of these things does this school teach, system teach, but I will and do. Helping the community, elderly, needy, and unfortunates goes a long way with my, my and my family's religious beliefs and that is where it should stay, along with our church community. I have the authority to motivate my children off the couch and to, and to help out where needed, not you. There are better ways to achieve, vote number five, there are better ways to achieve the desired results. While talking, talking to Dr. Conway today, she informed me that the goal was to inspire students to do more in community service on their own. And that by forcing students to do community service, they would realize that it feels good to help where needed. Although this scene, although it may seem I am opposed to having them do community service, this is not the case. What I'm opposed to is the board forcing them as well as the negative approach at it. If you do not serve your sentence of community service, you will not be allowed to graduate. If doing community service comes with its own reward, and I believe it does, then why approach it that way? If you do community service, you will receive extra credit and it will help in getting college of your choice, as you can put it down in your application. Then, as a student sees the rewards of helping others outweigh the cheap offer of the school made, they will be inspired to continue doing so on their own. As a former Cub Scout leader, Sunday School teacher, assistant youth leader, proud uncle of twenty, and father of four, I have learned you cannot force good upon children. You lead by example, you show them the rewards of doing good, and they will follow. There's an adage that would be appropriate here, and it is, you can draw more flies with honey than you can with vinegar. Number six, what qualifies as community service and who is that person that is the judge? How do you grade it? Who and where's the instructor? What degree do they possess? How do you justify not passing on a, on a student on a course and subject with no teacher, instruction, grading system beyond pass or fail and no clear outline defines what qualifies as community service? What, uh, would a simple pass or fail grade suffice on the Connecticut Mastery? Even if it's part of, is it even a part of Connecticut Mastery? Even physical education gets a letter grade, does it not? Why does this community service have such weight? I might not have a PhD as some of you do, but it doesn't really take one to realize that this is just wrong. It doesn't take a genius to notice that most of these questions have no clear answers or any answer at all. While I could go on, I realized time is limited, so this list will suffice. The bottom line is my daughter, as well as my other children on their way, will not serve your sentence and complete your community service. I have four possible solutions to propose. One, you can give my daughter, as well as my other children who are on their way, an exemption, opening the doors for others to be exempt as well. Two, you can remove the policy altogether. Three, you can amend the policy to make it volunteer, a voluntary option, as I pointed out earlier, there is a better way. Or four, you can prepare for a court battle and be prepared to pay for private education for my children while this goes through the court system, as my daughter will not be held back while the courts decide. I and my lawyer friend believe that I have a strong case against the school district as forced labor, slavery is illegal and has been so for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak this evening at community forum? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Denise Barrera, twenty-one Grand Avenue. On Friday, April twenty-sixth, Northeast School held their annual science fair. This year, Mrs. Chikin was the organizer. In addition to doing a great job, she also put a little twist on the event by making the fair a science and academic fair. I was amazed to see the outcome by the fifth grade students' projects. They showcased everything from the length of time it takes for steel to rust, the physics of archery, which brand of popcorn pops the best, and finally, which paper towel is worth our money. The classrooms put together some well-fought and creative academics displays as well. Mrs. Chek's first grade class told us many, many facts about animals. Mrs. Leslie's second grade class created towers regarding gravity. And we learned from Mrs. Warner's third grade class about a contest that they had creating junk, junk words, I guess it was. Since many of you that sit on the board have a full-time job and are also parents yourself, you probably weren't able to attend our fair. So, I just wanted to share with you what a wonderful event this was and how hard the students worked on their projects.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak this evening at the community forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four point zero, uh, item, uh, personnel. Item four point one, appointment of the Rockville High School principal, Dr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Um, I would like to invite Mr. Andy Rocket to, Andrew Rocket, to come to the, the table in case the board has questions. And I would like to introduce the board to Mr. Andrew Rocket. Uh, in education, uh, Mr. Rocket started as a science teacher at the Windsor Locks Middle School. He became an assistant principal at Goodwin Tech in New Britain. He then was an assistant principal at Manchester High School before becoming the principal of Killingley High School, a school similar in size and, uh, uh, background to Rockville High School. He's been in Killingley for at least about three years now. However, prior, prior to teaching, uh, he had another life. He was an officer in the Marine Corps, an officer in the banking industry, as well as a practicing attorney for many years. He brings nine years in administrative experience, so he will be placed on the top step in our, uh, our collective bargaining agreement. And, uh, I would like to introduce him to you, Mr. Andrew Rocket, and, uh, propose him as the next principal of Rockville High School beginning July one.
Thank you, Dr. Conway, and welcome, Mr. Rocket. Folks, you have seen the information provided in the board. In fact, does anybody have any questions or wish to propose a motion? Mrs. Arkin.
I move to approve the appointment of Mr. Andrew Rocket as the principal at Rockville High School effective July first.
Thank you. And a second, Mr. Kemp.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for a show, a vote by show of hands, all in favor. And that motion is unanimous. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Rocket. Would you like to say anything?
Well, yes, uh, first, um, thank you very much. I'm thrilled to, um, join the Rockville High School team and continue the good work of the folks, um, there I've already started. So, um, I'm now working in Eastern Connecticut and can't tell you how happy I am to be returning to Central Connecticut. Uh, some of you know, I worked in town for, uh, several years as a temporary assistant clerk at the courthouse and, and I passed my wife's old law because she worked in town also for a couple of years. So, for me, even though I live in Summers, this to me feels like coming home. Um, I'm tremendously excited about, um, the opportunity. I'll tell you that in my own sort of, you know, what's in like a Rockville. I hear, uh, that you have a very strong staff and able administrators and, um, I'm particularly excited about continuing association with an ag ed department, which is very close to my heart. Um, I'll tell you that I want to know illusions as to the challenges ahead, um, general ones, economic, um, federal and state mandates, Common Core, seed evaluations, things like that. Uh, but on the other hand, I, I very much look forward to, uh, working for Dr. Conway and, um, and the team here in place at Rockville. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just going home now to do the dishes, my work's at Hurry Home.
Okay, item five point zero. Item five point zero, which is general business. Item five point one, Confucius Classroom at, uh, Glensham School. Update from students and teachers. Thank you, Dr. Conway.
Yes, we are very excited. We had a wonderful opportunity this spring that Mrs. Goodrich Shaker brought to us, uh, where one of our, uh, teachers of Chinese came to us and were calling the Confucius School, uh, once a week for several weeks. Very excited. Just turn this over to Mrs. Shaker.
Thank you very much.
Just come to the microphone if you could. Use the handheld.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce, uh, Jean Jean May, who is, uh, our teacher at Confucius Classroom at Vernon Center Middle School. She attended Fudan University in Shanghai, China, and also has her master's degree from West Virginia University. Um, she is currently the Confucius Institute Program Manager at Central Connecticut State University. So, uh, we welcome May and she is anxious to provide an update on the Chinese instruction at V C M S. Hello, everybody. My name is May and I'm so happy I have so many students here today. Please stand up. For the very new Confucius Institute in Connecticut, the Central Connecticut State University one, as the first and the only one, but there are over four hundred Confucius Institute, institutes globally and over eighty in the United States. We are the first and the only one in Connecticut. From this year, we have two pilot programs in Connecticut as after-school Chinese program, one as in Vernon, Vernon Center Middle School, but we have high school students. We are now at almost the end of, the end of the after-school programs. I'm so glad I have these very talented and focused students and we have very supportive, wonderful parents giving extra rides almost every week. So, today I would like to share with you what we learned. We learned Chinese languages, language mannering. We, after fifty classes, all the students could do the self-introduction in Chinese. They could fill in blank for the whole sheet and they could read all these sentences as a self-introduction in Chinese. Also, we learn, uh, a lot about culture, about food, about community. Also, we learn the connection to the underside of the world. We have connection to Shandong, which is Connecticut's state, sister state in China. We will have, uh, video later by the end of the program. We have communications with our students and Shandong Middle School students in both languages, Chinese and English. So, here today, I would like my students introduce themselves, uh, in Chinese. Tell me, 你叫什么? 我叫李 Kenny. 我叫李小北. 我叫李丽丽.
我叫郑凯文.
我叫包凯晨.
我叫周伊丽.
很好，谢谢. Next, we would like to share with you a Chinese children's lyrics wisdom. Hands, alright? I gotta give you that, please do. Could you just go? 一二三，开始.
Board members, does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much for your presentations.
Yes, and here after this spring semester, here is a program, uh, helped by Actful American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages. We have a Chinese, Discover Chinese program in Glastonbury and Wallingford for middle and high school students. So, I hope our students will not forget about Chinese and keep learning Chinese in the summer. And for the future, uh, what we are doing in Confucius Institute is we are going to, uh, evaluate our two pilot programs. And, uh, after that, we are considering converting the after-school programs to regular Chinese programs in school hours. With that, it would be very helpful for, helpful to the middle school or high school or school districts to apply for a Confucius classroom as West Hartford, as Glastonbury, as Simsbury, which would financially get support from China, the Chinese Education Ministry. Yes, I would like to share with you, if you have any more, uh, questions, feel free to let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your information this evening.
Thank you, May. I, I do want to introduce, uh, Madame Bleek, who is in the audience. She's, uh, Vernon Center Middle School and also a high school parent. Um, and thanks to Madame Bleek, we were introduced to May and, um, and were able to bring Chinese to Vernon, so we're very happy to have that connection. Thank you very much.
All right, item five point two, uh, summer school academy update. Dr. Conway.
It was the perfect segue for May to mention a summer program for students, uh, middle school and high school students in Chinese. Uh, Mr. De Valles is introducing the board to our first enrichment summer school program. Um, we have, uh, two different programs, uh, many different offerings for students. So, these are, uh, teachers who have come forward to offer, uh, to our students some enrichment, um, academic and, uh, also, um, some leadership and, uh, other things. So, I'll, I'll turn this right over to Mr. De Valles, who's running the summer school program.
All right, thank you. Um, before I get into the, you know, enrichment program, which I, we call the discovery program, I just wanted to give you an update just on our traditional summer academy. Um, as of May first, we had fairly low enrollment. We had about eighteen students. Um, since then, we sent out reminder flyers to all families. Um, we extended the, the deadline until May seventeenth. And now we've finally seen, um, enrollment start to pick up and we're up to about sixty students, which from what I heard is above the normal at this time, but, um, you know, I'm still expecting that to probably double by the time, uh, summer school rolls around. For that process, we're just, uh, for the, the summer academy, we're in the process right now of just reviewing applications and hiring the staff to, um, run the summer academy. Now, as for the discovery program, those are, the teachers are already set in place. We have seven teachers running the discovery program. And basically, each week, um, there's gonna be various courses for every grade level K through five. The way we did it this year is, um, kindergarten, first grade will have a course together, second grade and third grade, and fourth grade and fifth grade. And, um, according to the week, sometimes there's, you know, two or three offers, but at least at the minimum, there's one enrichment class that each grade level can sign up for if they want. They range from, um, math, um, courses. We have several literature courses, one cooking with literature where they'll read a book and then do some minor cooking, you know, to go along with the story. Spanish, we have offered for a week. We also have some roll ropes and team building activities over at Central Road School. So, we are excited for that. All of these flyers, and these are the flyers that went home to all the students. This one's for fourth and fifth grade, this one's for K through three, and it should've been in your package just so you could have a look. All those were distributed last week and we're already getting some come, um, registrations back for that. I really think they went home like Friday, so, uh, today would be really the first day of getting back and we already are. And the key to the enrichment programs is I wanna keep the courses small, so we're capping it off at twelve. So, we're capping it off at twelve students each, just so, you know, all the students in that course really will get that nice attention from the teachers. So, that's our update. Do you guys have any questions about it?
Questions, Board members. Now, Mr. Conway.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to understand the numbers here. You've got a hundred and twenty students. You charge fifty dollars. That's six thousand dollars all total. But it's not clear to me whether that's per week. So, it might be four times that much. If it's fifty dollars a week, do most of the students stay four weeks? Or how does that work?
Yeah, it's fifty dollars per week. And we wanted it flexible, so, you know, families who are on vacation, they could just pick and choose the weeks and the courses they want. So, every course is fifty dollars. So, yeah, maximum enrollment, if we get the twelve students for a course, is taking in about six hundred dollars for that class. You know, after salaries, because that's, you know, teacher salary is part of that, six hundred dollars. You know, the rest is for transportation and for any supplies that the teachers might need to run the class.
Right. What I'm trying to figure out is, are we working with twenty-four thousand dollars here maximum? If every one of the hundred and twenty went four weeks, times fifty dollars a week, you end up with twenty-four thousand. If it's just one, I'm not sure what you were trying to say here in this paragraph. So, basically, what are we talking about? Is it a six thousand dollar program or twenty-four thousand?
If it's full to capacity and everyone pays, it'd be twenty-four thousand.
Okay. And that's what pays for the salaries?
Pays for the salaries, pays for transportation. Health pays for the transportation and for any materials for the program.
Do you tend to max out at the one-twenty times four, which would be four-eighty? Or about how many?
I mean, that would be great if we filled it up. Since this is the first year that I'm doing this, that we're doing an enrichment program like this, I'm not sure what to expect. You know, I would hope that throughout the whole district, you'd be able to get, you know, twelve students for a class if you're looking at all the students in the elementary schools. But, you know, right now, it's tough to say. I mean, we do have some wiggle room. So, even if there's only eight students or seven students in the course, we'll still be able to fund it without losing any money.
Is anyone able to attend who is not a Vernon student?
I had that question asked, and, you know, absolutely. We don't have much advertising to other districts, but if someone wanted to come from another district, I mean, there's room for it. And as long as they sign up and, you know, they're honored. But I am looking at Vernon students first to serve them.
Sure. Well, Dr. Conway, do you wish to add to that?
Mr. Chair, I threw the chair to you, Mr. Kent. We were looking, our high school also takes in out-of-district students in summer school, because not every high school offers summer school. So, we were looking at the ratio. So, let's say the course was a hundred and twenty, and we charged a hundred and sixty, so a thirty percent difference for out-of-town students. It would be the same percentage markup for this program. So, we wanted to keep it consistent. And I just don't know what those numbers are, but...
Mrs. Zorn.
Mike, is the intention to be self-funded?
For this, yes, the intention. Because our summer academy for the elementary school is not self-funded. The middle school and the high school, their summer programs are self-funded, but the elementary one's not. And, you know, just going ahead of this, I was really trying to fund this just based on registrations.
Is there a break-even number?
I don't have that.
Don't know if it's okay?
I know if we have about an average of eight students in each one, then we'll break even. If it's less than that, then we're going to have to look at, do we just cancel that session? Or can we take a loss here and there? But if we have an average of about eight students, then we'll be able to run fine.
And I want to say thank you really, Mike. This is a lot of work, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity for kids. We need to, I think it's Danny Damon Merrill who says advertise, tell people what we're doing. This is really wonderful. And extending it, if you can't fill the numbers in Vernon, it'd be great to circulate the information.
Oh, absolutely.
Somehow. And the offerings, they look like so much fun with Vernon or whatever.
Yeah, the teachers really did a nice job. I just fancied the seed. It was up to them to put together the polls, and I was having to see the response. It was really nice.
Clues to everybody.
Have you done outreach to any of our elementary students that are attending magnet schools? That would be a wonderful way to give them a feel for the exciting things that are happening in the Vernon schools and maybe encourage them to come out back.
You know, I just had a meeting this afternoon for summer learning lots. Michelle Helsch, she was running it. And we were just talking about ways to get it out into, you know, our town a little bit more. We were talking about, you know, some online sources, whether we do an article on the patch about the different offerings over the summer. And, but, I mean, it's an avenue that, and we also have, we're going to upload it on our district website. I'm not sure how many magnet families are checking out our district website. But it's definitely something that, you know, is a must to explore and try to get some of those students back. But right now, we're still in the process of really thinking about how we could advertise it better.
Any questions?
Can I continue? This looks like almost a mailer. Why don't you get some addresses and send out some flyers so they're aware? Because they don't get the things that our students bring home from school. But I think it'd be very important for them to have the offering.
Yeah, I definitely could get a list of those students and send them out. So, it's a good idea.
Any other questions for Mr. Debalas? Seeing none, I don't believe there's any motions. Thank you for your report this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item five point three. This is a request to the Town of Vernon Town Council for additional funds to cover the deficit that we're facing this budget season. And Dr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Cool. Board members, I sent you several documents on Friday. A little later than our packet went out, I apologize. But you did receive those. If not, I just, if anyone needs one, that probably isn't a great question to ask if it's up at the center. The first document that I would share, this would be the order I would share this with the town council, thank you, Phil, would be the year-to-date. Now, that is in your packet, item five point six. So, I'm sure you've already seen that. The bottom line in that document is a negative one million, five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. So, that's the deficit that we do need to fill, the hole that we need to fill. We've been working very, very hard in trying to see where we can unencumber funds, so places where we are just not going to spend what we can pinch even further. You know that we've had a spending freeze since February first, a hard spending freeze, which means every single purchase order goes to Mr. Pakara. He looks at every one. There are very few he is approving. There are some, of course, there are necessities that we have to have. But there are several that he is not approving as well. There has been a hiring freeze since just after February one. We've looked at other efficiencies in our operations. We have looked at our salaried employees and hourly employees to see if we have encumbered more. If, for instance, a teacher has gone out on maternity leave, they get paid for the first six weeks where they're confined. And the second six weeks, though, as child rearing is not a paid leave. And so, they may still be encumbered for that, and we would unencumber those funds because we would not need to pay them for those six weeks. It's an example. Risk management, so that would be in health insurance or workers' compensation, unemployment, and then some other categories. So, we were able to go through the budget, and you can see, this is a two-page document or two-sided document. And the first page and about half of the second page goes through the board's large accounts. And there are seven of them, excuse me. The account, fifty-one thousand, fifty-one zero zero zero, is salary and wages. You can see going through that account, we went through with a fine-tooth comb. We've been doing this all year. This required Herculean effort by Mrs. Rabai, who is here, as well as the payroll department to go through for those things. You can see some of the amounts are very small, a hundred ninety-two dollars. But we feel that we have found all of those amounts that could be unencumbered. The first three items on that list were savings because we have not hired. That was part of the hiring freeze. We did not hire a human resource specialist, even though the board actually approved that position last fall. And we have used a retired person who just is doing our insurance part-time during the week. So, we're saving there. We have an open maintainer position. We're very grateful to the custodial secretary-maintainer unit, that they have been very cooperative. They know we still plan to fill that position. But right now, we are not hiring. We do plan to hire paraprofessionals. We have saved a small amount of money by moving people around and not hiring where we could not hire. Next step expenditures, now, I don't want to go through all of these. The next step is our program for eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds. And in those areas, there are special funds to offset some of the expenditures we've had. So, we let those special funds that have come in. And you can see, there's a whole list of individuals that are just identified by their role, where we've been able to find approximately two hundred thirty thousand dollars. Unemployment benefits. We have had an employee out on unemployment for quite a while who has just found a position. So, we have released the remaining amount of the unemployment that would have gone to that person. We haven't been able to find anything in professional and technical services. In property services, we've gone through that. We found small savings, approximately five thousand dollars, in electric, in sewer, in fire safety, and that does not put us in danger at all. And in natural gas, the interesting thing about the natural gas is, this was at Center Road School. We have dual-fuel burners there, and we were moving to natural gas, but we had a lot of oil left in the tank. And so, rather than moving to natural gas, we're burning off the oil that we have to save the eighteen thousand dollars there, rather than just leaving the oil in the tank. We're saving the money. Student transportation. It looks at this point that we are going to be able to save a hundred seventeen thousand dollars. This is the first year of a five-year contract. And as you realize, all the savings going through the year, you're not sure where it's going to cost you more or less. And that is the number that Mr. Pakara has come up with, the bus company. Supplies and materials, we're not changing air filters right now. Of course, if we're absolutely desperate, we would do so, but we are going to try not to change those. Gasoline, that was restricting our travel. To some of our employees, we're using our vehicles a lot more than they needed to, and so that has been restricted. Instructional supplies is across the board. Other supplies and materials is across the board, across the district. And textbooks, there were seventy-five thousand dollars in that account encumbered for grades seven and eight. We started in grade six this year. And Mrs. Marasso worked very hard with the publisher and was able to bring that amount for grades seven and eight down to fifty-four thousand dollars. So, we would offer to the board a twenty thousand dollar savings there, and we would like to purchase the seventh and eighth grade materials. It would be very difficult for our sixth graders to move from sixth to seventh grade and go backwards, rather than continuing on. And we would like to continue the program at this point. So, computer software, excuse me, fifty-two hundred dollars. That was with iPass, one of the modules that we did not have to pay for again this year. And then, non-instructional equipment. This is a variety of adaptive equipment that is used in special ed, and you never know when you're going to need it. And Mrs. Buell believes that we can release eight thousand dollars of that this year. So, in addition, we have, our excess cost reimbursement did come back. We have been planning on sixty-five percent, which is what the state tells us to do, plan between sixty and seventy-five percent. However, our reimbursement has come in at seventy-four percent. So, we're quite delighted with that. The reimbursement will be one million, twelve thousand dollars. And when you couple that with the other savings, we are at one million, four hundred forty-six thousand dollars. So, the difference between what our deficit is now and what we have in excess costs, which will be transferred over to reduce the deficit and the savings when we release the encumbrances, is about a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. Now, this is May thirteenth. We still have seven weeks of school, eight weeks before July first. So, there could be changes in that, but we've tried to be very, very close. So, that could go up and down. It will not go up and down significantly, however. So, we're looking at, as I said, approximately a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars of deficit that needs to be mitigated. There are three places to look for the funding that are at the town, because we will need to go to the town. We don't have revenue. We don't have savings accounts or anything like that. Medical loss ratio, this is insurance premiums that were sent back to the board, and they reside at the town. The board, however, has already figured this as ninety-two thousand dollars, has figured that into next year's budget. So, if we did use it to offset this year's budget, we would have to find something to offset next year's budget. So, that is not recommended, but it is there, and it is designated for the board. In addition, about a year and a half ago, maybe a little more, eighteen to twenty months ago, Cigna, who was our insurer just before that time, returned funding. It's called Shared Returns Premium Stabilization Funds. And the Board of Education had a portion of that, about three hundred nineteen thousand, and the town had about eighty-four thousand. So, there were portions. They did come to the town. They are in an account at the town. And so, as I said, the board's share is three hundred nineteen thousand dollars in those. That is to be used, again, for possible premium reductions, but also can be used to offset deficits. In addition, we are projecting that our Medicaid reimbursement, which was designated as forty thousand dollars by the town in their revenue projections, will be an additional two hundred thousand dollars. So, that is money above the forty thousand, which was not expected by the town. We don't have the exact number, and unfortunately, we don't know whether it will be just before or after July one. In addition, we have additional tuition reimbursement for students from out-of-town who have come to us for their education, and that's approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So, that total of three hundred thousand dollars was not included in the town's revenue. So, that would be for them. Although I know there has been other revenue that the town had expected and had written down that they are not receiving. This is three hundred thousand dollars that they did not expect. My recommendation is to request from the town a transfer of funds or a reduction to expenses, would be my preference, of the premium stabilization funds. Right now, you can see that we do not need the entire three hundred nineteen thousand dollars. I think that just to ask for a hundred thirty-seven thousand would not be a safe way to go. I do have a proposed motion in front of your places. I put it up in front of the place that wouldn't get confused in your other papers there. My suggestion is to ask for up to, but not exceeding, two hundred thousand dollars. I think that's conservative. I think that, but I think that would work. I would turn this back over to you, Mr. Cool, for discussion. This would need to go to the town. If it's an appropriation, it does need to go to a town meeting. The town council would have to vote to turn it to a town meeting, and that they would hold it at a town council meeting, however. And the transfer, we're unsure of whether that has to go to a town meeting or not.
Thank you, Dr. Conway. The Finance Committee did talk about this this evening. And as you know, Mrs. Fisher and Mr. Percy, they would have been here. They were at that Finance Committee meeting this evening. But they're at Town Hall talking about next year's budget right now. The recommendation from the Finance Committee would be that we go along with what Dr. Conway has stated. They're going after the premium stabilization funds because, again, when we got the notice on those funds, it was clearly indicated that those funds could be used to offset deficits, that they were not specifically to be applied towards premium reduction. So, that gives us the latitude that we need as a board to request those funds be transferred. And they were earmarked for the Board of Education, so they should be sitting in an account over at the Town Hall, identified as Board of Education funds. So, asking for a transfer, we believe, would be the right approach as well. It's not an additional appropriation because the money came back earmarked for the board. So, Dr. Conway did indicate there is a proposed motion, and I would interhand motion and then discussion. Mr. Kent?
I'm not prepared to make a motion yet. I'm trying to look at what you have on the yellow sheet here, and it's... I'm trying to look at what you have on the yellow sheet here, and it's using the words for an additional appropriation, yet you just said you prefer to use the word transfer.
We do not want to use the word appropriation, because
Well, that's what you have on your
Well, this was last week's thinking, and like I say, we were trying to put together the board event packet, and we were getting all the thoughts together as far as what our financing, what the funding sources were. At the time, there were three options, and those are the three options that Dr. Conway has identified here. So that's the proposed motion where it's requesting a transfer. Exactly, absolutely. That's why we sent that around this evening.
All right. Okay, that solves one concern. I'd like to ask about the $319,000. If it's earmarked for the board event and it's transferable to us, and I don't see why we're not asking for the $319,000.
A year ago, actually, it was probably a year and a half ago, maybe a little longer, we had seen in the newspaper indication that the insurance company was sending these monies back to the towns. Mr. Caro inquired of the town at that time to find out, you know, how it was affecting Vernon. That's where we learned from Mr. Lubicki that Vernon had in fact received an appropriation, and that it was sitting in an account, one partially earmarked for the town, partially earmarked for the Board of Education. But at that time, when we learned about this, it was a request to bring the monies back to us, because at the time, we already had a set budget, and we do not have a savings account or a contingency fund account, similar to what we have with the capital non-recurring. So the logical place was the monies are being held at the town, and that's why we're requesting the town to transfer the monies from an account that should be held in our name.
Okay, but use a dollar amount that I can relate to.
Yeah.
When you say transfer the monies, well, I'm thinking transfer $319,000. Mary just said that this motion, and as I read it here, is not to exceed $200,000, so I'll go back to
The rationale for that, Mr. Kent, is that we can't carry a balance into next year. So if we go for $200,000 or $300,000, and then we wind up with an overage, that money goes back to the general fund. So by requesting just the amount that we need to cover this deficit, I think it may be worthy of discussion at our next budget meeting, which is discussing next year's budget, to request the remaining balance be applied to next year's budget. I think that would be appropriate.
Well, that would be okay with me, as long as that's the understanding. When we send a letter to the town to take the 319 to, in some, or some fraction thereof, like you're saying, up to $200,000.
It would be appropriate to do that as two separate actions. One, taking, addressing the deficit for this year, and then we want to do that same action with the budget for next year.
So long as that's what they should be put on notice that we intend to do. I don't mind that we would go for the $200,000 at this time and call it step one, but I don't want it to happen this way. We ultimately then ask for the remainder, and someone at the town side says, oh no, you asked for only $200,000, and you can't have the rest. So this council needs to understand what our intentions are. Our intentions then are to go for the 319 in two bite-sized pieces, one now and one soon, or sooner than later.
To follow the difference with next year's budget. I would agree that's a, that's a good point. I'll recognize Ms. Goldich, thank you, Ms. Arnn.
Why $200,000 and not $137,154?
Because it's May 13th, and the number is probably not going to be that particular number, it will go up or down. I think the 200 is, you know, it's not an exorbitant amount, and we only want what we need. And so, but if it goes above 137, let's say it goes up to 145, we would have to go back to the council again to get a higher number. So my thought is you come in around 200, and then if it goes up, that's fine. If it goes up to 145, even 155, then it's fine. The board would still be covered, we wouldn't have to go back to the town a second time.
Would we lose the balance if we only use $137,000, and we've requested 200, if we can't carry any monies over?
Request it up to and not, not to exceed.
Yeah, not in the form of the current motion, that we want them to draw the funds that we need out of the, out of that balance, not exceed 200,000, which we, we're confident it's not going to go over the 200,000 number. But if we had to take additional action and require this board to get back together, put the new number on the table, then we'd have to get another motion, another meeting of the town, so it just didn't make sense to do it, you know, to underestimate it. We figured overestimated will give us the latitude, and we're hoping it'll actually lessen that, but we can't be certain. So we're only going for the amount that we need, that's the bottom line.
And what about the Medicaid reimbursement and tuition reimbursement? Will that money be available to us after the turn of the fiscal year?
No, that's town revenue, and we do not collect revenue as a board. That goes to the town, and that goes into the general fund. That's, when the town does, when they factor their budget, they factor in the revenues that are coming in. They factor lower based on information that was provided from the board and what our estimates were.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, they're going to realize a higher gain on that. And if we had to go after an appropriation, that would be our justification for it, but we don't want to take that approach, because if we went that road, then we have to ask for an additional appropriation, which requires a town meeting, and then you have to go through the town meeting process. For anything over, I believe it's 1% of your budget, it would require a town meeting.
A tenth of a
Our tenth of a, I think it was a very small percentage to get another meeting going. Thank you. I'm going to recognize Ms. Arnn.
We really should have a motion on the table for discussion. My movement, the Vernon Board of Education approved the superintendent's proposed deficit mitigation plan, and requests that the town council approve the transfer of up to, but not to exceed, $200,000 from the Board of Education's share of the Cigna Shared Returns Premium Stabilization Funds to mitigate the projected deficit of the current fiscal year.
I have a motion, Ms. Bush.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I would open up, per discussion, continue. Mr. Kent?
I don't mind voting for this right now, if that's your preference, but I just wanted to ask some detailed questions on these spreadsheets here. So if we pass the motion, are we still going to have the option to inspect the information here? Do you want to move on?
I would ask, if you have a question, if you put it out on the table, we'll try to address it. If it's something that has to be addressed by Mr. Caro, we do have Ms. Rabai here from the business office.
Well, you want the questions before we vote on the motion or after?
During the discussion, I would say it's appropriate.
All right. And this $300,000 that the town gets, that it's on here, but we don't, it was generated as a result of board event. How, it says new, how new? When did they become aware of this?
We have engaged a firm to assist us in Medicaid reimbursement. Medicaid reimbursement is very time-consuming and very paper-intensive, and we certainly get it, but that means that a teacher or a service provider, a nurse, a physical therapist, occupational therapist, who is providing services to children, that has to take some of her time away from children to fill out enormous amounts of paperwork to get reimbursement. And so there's not a lot of incentive to ask for Medicaid reimbursement. We're already paying for it, there is reimbursement, it generally goes to the town. Apparently, there was an agreement, I don't know how many years ago, when Medicaid first started reimbursing, so that's got to be at least six or seven, that up to $70,000 of reimbursement from the board would go to the town immediately, and then the board could keep anything over $70,000. And that was not much of a motivator. So our, our teachers, they, they would put in for it, but we rarely got over $40,000 or $45,000 in reimbursement, which of course all went back to the town. There is a lot more funding out there for reimbursement that we can get through Medicaid, and so we have engaged a company to assist us, and they even offsetting the fee for doing this, will still net us over $200,000 in addition to the $40,000 that was budgeted by the town. So that is, that is brand-new, we have not received that yet.
Does the town know that that's coming at them?
Yes, they do.
So some of their arguments about what the governor is doing to them is mitigated to this amount?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, they've been telling us, we need, we need to lower our budget because the car tax thing is being pushed on them and so on from the state end, but there was never any mention from the town about the $300,000 that's coming to them from the Medicaid that I heard.
Yeah, our Board of Education administration met with the town hall on Friday to bring them up to speed on this information and make sure that they are aware of it. But again, interpretation over there at the council level
At the council level in particular, they're the ones who vote and talk to us and tell us how we ought to tighten our belts and so on, and there's $300,000 they don't even know about.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Other questions?
Yes, this is kind of technical stuff here, but I would like to know, one, on the first page, there's a reference to some of the savings that Kathy was good enough to identify, and it's an $11,000 item, but the little check marks have it way over in the other. Why is, what is that? I mean, and also I'd like clarification of what does status change mean, in addition to the classification of this particular savings and other?
I'll ask Kathy to give us some examples of status change, if she would. And in terms of other, however, that might have been a maternity leave, where the person took the rest of the year off, as opposed to doing that, and there are also some unpaid suspensions in there as well.
All right. And what does status change then?
A, a status change would actually take into account, a family medical leave, it could take into account the, oh yeah, the workers' comp claims. If they're out on workers' comp, we reduce their salary by the amount of the workers' That's pretty much most of what they were.
Okay. All right. I just had no idea what that change might entail. And I did, I did have circled here the $117,000, which you did identify was savings in the contract.
That was the bus contract, yes.
In what way did we come up to the good that much? Fuel or what? I mean, how did we, I mean, that's a very substantial amount.
Yes, it's more than we had anticipated.
It is. When we did the estimate back for the budget last, last period, we still had not completed the negotiations for our new bus contract. And as the year has been going on, we're starting to realize, as we've been digging down and looking at the bills that have been coming in and projecting through the rest of the year, we had encumbered too much of an expense, so we're releasing that now. And hopefully, we'll continue to see those savings over the remainder of the contract.
And will that, do you expect that will play out? That's such a large number within the savings here, do you expect that number to hold roughly to that amount?
I would say yes. I mean, our accounts payable, people have looked at it very closely and looked at the trends and how much we've been using and how much we expect to use to finish out the school year.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and I'm not going to repeat the whole motion, but it's to request the monies from the town to be transferred to the Board of Education. I'm going to ask for a vote by a show of hands, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Okay, the second step, I mean, I'm not going to go away from this $319,000. Do you feel necessary at this meeting tonight to take any intended action on the difference between the 200 we just asked for and the 319?
I would say we want to take that up at the budget meeting that we're going to have, we're going to schedule this evening, the special budget meeting, to address the additional $300,000 that we have to take care of, plus whatever happens at town hall tonight. And I think that would be appropriate at that time to address it. Moving on to item 5.4, which is the authorization to sign an agreement, Dr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Hul. This is one of those authorizations to sign that the board, I'm asking the board to do. We have a partnership with the University of Connecticut School of Social Work, and we would love to get some social worker interns. We do have a social worker at Skinner Road School who would love to have an intern with her, and that would help us out certainly. They usually come to us full-time and stay for the whole year. So I would ask that you approve the authority to sign, so that we can move that application along.
Ms. Bush?
I'd like to make a motion that the Vernon Board of Education approve a certified resolution indicating that the superintendent is authorized to make and execute and approve on behalf of the Vernon Board of Education, Skinner Road School, and the University of Connecticut, a memo of understanding to collaborate in the education of social work students.
Mr. Buthar?
I second.
Now, the motion's second, is there a discussion on the motion? Ms. Arnn?
Is there any, are there any negatives to doing this, Dr. Conway? You said it's nice to have an additional social worker, but what responsibilities does that place on Vernon?
The responsibility is placed on the social worker who will be super, our social worker, who will be supervising her. So where some of her time will be used to supervise this person and mentor this person, in addition, this person is coming in, working on her master's degree, so has a lot of experience and is coming in and is adding, so the net will be that we'll have one-plus social worker, not too full, but one-plus social worker. So it's truly a benefit to us. We're not paying tuition, we're not paying, oftentimes you pay someone's tuition for the semester or something, and this is, this is a true freebie.
I was curious about the date that was included in the contract, which says April 19th.
That's probably when it came.
So it wouldn't be effective until it was signed?
Correct, right, it has not been signed.
And it's one social worker at a time?
That's my understanding, yes. Unless we have another social worker wanting to take somebody.
Ms. Bush?
Would the qualifications of the student be reviewed by the social worker in the school as well as administration?
Exactly, yes, Ms. Buell is in charge of that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. Arnn?
I'm assuming that there's no cost at all?
That's correct, none, not to us.
Seeing no more hands, I'm going to bring the motion to a vote by a show of hands, all in favor?
Your first motion.
Ms. Bush?
I need a motion and a resumption.
Fine, Ms. Bush, I second.
I'm sorry.
So are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so it is unanimous, thank you. Okay, item 5.5, discussion of board subcommittees and structure. Ms. Arnn, you had requested this.
Just for your information, I included the board's bylaws, and the committee policy is 9131, just so you don't have to pile through them, but that was one of the parts of this discussion, so 9131, that's that. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's perfect. It, you know, I want to go over to Ms. Arnn, you had requested some discussion on this topic, so I give the floor to you.
Well, this came from, from concerns about my assignment to the curriculum committee, and feeling that we really don't serve a purpose, that we have experts who do all of the work and all of the homework and make recommendations, and asking unqualified board members to bless their recommendations seemed inappropriate to me. I never felt that I was in a position to say yes or no to any curriculum that was, that was brought forward. And then that went on to members who were, the discussion that we had about members attending committee meetings that they were not assigned to, which seemed a really appropriate way to get, to get information. That's what prompted my thought, that we need to take a look at our committee structure and actually our meeting structure. But having said that, I think it's such an important discussion that I would move to table it to a future meeting when we can have the input of the two missing board members.
Actually, there are three missing board members, but yes, Mr. Nichols is
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Not here today this evening. Mr. Nichols is missing tonight this evening. So, I have a motion to table, do I have a second? Ms. Goldich? I have a second, motion to table. Is there any discussion on the motion to table? Mr. Kent?
Maybe we could talk about it again? Why wouldn't we discuss it now, where having the opportunity before us? It could always be another occasion when more people are here. I don't know.
And I think that was kind of the sense that I was getting from Ms. Arndt is that she thought there may be more input if we had all the board members speaking to the subject matter rather than the smaller number that we have here this evening. Ms. Goldich?
What I will say, when Michelle and I talked about this, I looked at the committee's structure from an organizational standpoint, and I have some recommendations about how we could take another look at our structure. So, if we tabled this, it would give them a chance to go over what I recommended and come up with their own ideas. So, I'll just pass it to them.
Okay, so, any other discussion on the motion to table? Ms. Arndt?
Could I amend the motion to include at the next meeting? That we are...
Motion to table until the next meeting. Yeah, is that okay with the secretary? So, the motion is moved to table until the next board meeting? And seeing no further discussion, I will bring that motion to a vote by a show of hands, all in favor of that motion? And those opposed? And that motion is unanimous.
Mr. Chair? Could I suggest that we save this packet so we don't burn another tree? That's quite a bit of policy copy here.
Yeah, I would ask that Dr. Conley just make note of that to refer to the previous week's, our previous package when we send out the text.
Please send it electronic.
Thank you. And if people do want it, they could request it electronically, please. All right, moving to item 5.5, discussion, oh, we just, sorry. 5.6, Finance Committee Report. Dr. Conley, I don't know if you read, I mean, we talked this evening about two subject matters, and we've addressed both of them so far. One of them was the deficit, which we've already taken action on. The other is the meeting going on at town hall that I think as soon as we wrap this one up, some of us would like to get to.
That was the entire discussion.
So, unless anybody has any further questions, we'll move on. Okay, moving on to item 5.7, which is the pre-60 degree evaluation process of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Hoel. I have a list of proposed interviewees. I had been asked by Rosemary Darcy, the interviewer, to provide a list of between 10 and 12 people. I have, the numbers in parentheses here are the numbers of people in each of these groups. On each, each interview costs $250. So, this is the list that I would propose. And I would need two out of the first group, two out of the second, two out of the third. So, if there's, and I would just go down the list. So, if there were people on here who did not prefer to have interviewed or other suggestions, I have not asked any of these people yet, however.
Ms. Arndt?
In view of the fact that we are missing three board members, I'd like to move to table this discussion as well. One of the most important things that this board does is evaluate the superintendent. And when two people have been called away for other responsibilities, I think it's unfair to them to move forward. So, I move to table this discussion to the next board meeting as well.
Motion to table till next meeting. Is there a second on that motion?
A second, Richard.
I do have a second, and I'll recognize Mr. Bhutar. Any discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, I'm going to call that motion to a vote by a show of hands, all in favor of the motion to table till next meeting? And those opposed? And those abstaining? I have one abstention by Mr. Kent. And that motion does pass to table till next meeting. Would you be able to forward this list to the other four members just for the critical information as well, via electronic? At least, so that we can consider it before next meeting? Thank you. Okay. We've already taken care of item, I'm going to spot here. Already taken care of item 5.8, which is the school security update. So, we're at 6.0, review and update the Board of Ed calendar. Does anybody have any updates for the calendar? And we do, yes, we do have a 6.1, sorry. Scheduling of the special board meeting. This is to address the needs of the 350, plus whatever happens this evening. We need to, we're going to look for dates to schedule a special meeting to address budget.
Which one?
Pardon me?
Which budget?
The 2013, '14, the next budget, not the current. And Ms. Fisher gave me a list of dates. I'm just trying to figure out where the heck I'm going to use the paper, actually. And I don't know if anybody had any specific dates that you had. I'm just scanning my calendar right now. Oh, there's, all right, I got Mrs. Fisher.
While you're looking, since special meetings cannot have agenda items added to it...
It's going to be one agenda item, and that is a budget discussion.
Well, the budget discussion of the forthcoming budget year is appropriate, of course, but might there be some need to talk about the existing budget? And if it were included in the agenda for the special meeting, we could do it. I just wanted to...
Yeah, and at this point, the target is specifically next year's budget. If we learn some additional information between now and the actual posting of the meeting, we could adjust the topic to include this current budget deficit. I would take that into consideration. But at this point, we're looking strictly at the...
Well, I know what we're looking to do, but I, because special meetings are so particular in their construction, I thought I'd suggest we include it.
Correct. I didn't want to schedule a meeting without input. But I do feel that this topic would be appropriate for a special meeting and have to try and tackle it with a regular board meeting. And I would consider that other item as well. Like you say, I'm hoping we're beyond that. Ms. Arndt?
To Mr. Kent's point, can we adjust an agenda by eliminating an item? I know we can't add an item, but can we adjust an agenda for a special meeting by eliminating an agenda item?
We do not add, I would...
You can't add, but this, I've never heard...
We touch the topic and we would take no action, is what would happen if we had an agenda item that we didn't wish to do anything with. We would just take no action on it.
Then why not cover our base and just put it in there? It's an agenda item, if you can.
We could, we could do that. I mean, just the budget, the current budget situation and the next year's budget. No problem with that. Dr. Conley, did you have any dates to propose? I know I have a list of dates that Mrs. Fisher is available, and I know where I'm available.
May 20 and May 22, which are Monday and a Wednesday.
Those are both good dates. And I see Mrs. Fisher as well. How about the Monday, the 20th, and Monday, the 22nd of May?
Monday, the 20th, and Wednesday, the 22nd. The board does have, if we want to go into June, the board does have the spring awards at 6 o'clock on the 3rd, with no meeting following. So, that could certainly be over by 7:00. The board wanted to piggyback that into June 3rd meeting.
I always prefer the sooner the better on anything.
So, how does next week, the 20th, look for folks? Ms. Arndt, is that not a good date?
It is.
How about the 22nd? That date's a good date for you?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldich, is the 22nd a good date for you?
Depends on the time.
Is the preference to start earlier, or start later, or...
They made three book fairs that night, starting at 6:00, so it could be 6:30. That would be fine with me.
I would be willing to target 7:00, but 6:30 or 7:00 o'clock is...
7:00 would be even better.
Mrs. Bush?
That's good.
Mr. Bhutar? So, it looks like, Mr. Kent, 22nd? Looks like the 22nd is the date that we will target. And we'll have two agenda items on that agenda. The current budget deficit, make sure that we resolve there, and the future budget, and any two other number we need to be at. That will be in this board.
You say 7?
Yeah, target is 7. Now, we give Ms. Goldich enough time, or anybody else who wishes to attend the book fair. Item 7.0, the press has gone home, so there's one final agenda item. Ms. Arndt, motion?
Change.
And motion? Mrs. Bush, so second, and non-debatable, all in favor? And those opposed? Those abstaining? Which way did you vote? Was that unanimous?